Just about 6:30, so we will call the Planning Commission on Tuesday, July 11th. Call it to order. We do have a forum of the Planning Commission. We have two members absent. And we're particularly sorry that our chairman is not here because of surgery. So we will carry on. Welcome all of you to our meeting and our... Do we have any announcements now, Jan?
Um, not yet.
Okay. Our first item on the agenda is case number AS116005, Sky Ranch. Water and wastewater, 1041 permit, and Molly O'Kord Larson will make the presentation from the county.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Molly O'Kord Larson, Senior Planner with the Public Works Department. The county attorney has reviewed the public notice and has determined that the applicant... Application has met all notice requirements and thereby establishing jurisdiction. What is before you this evening is Sky Ranch 1041 application. The applicants are Range View Metropolitan District and Pure Cycle Corporation. The applicant is seeking approval for a 1041 permit for water and wastewater treatment plants and associated facilities, including a water supply facility, existing reclaimed water pond, and pipelines. Subject properties include 19 acres of the state of Colorado land located off of East Quincy Avenue and Sky Ranch subdivision, which is located south of I-70 and west of Hayesmont Road. Staff recommends the application be approved based on the findings in the staff report. The applicant is here tonight and will be doing a presentation and go into more detail on the project. At this point, I'll turn it over to the applicant unless you have some questions for me.
Are there any questions from Molly?
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Harding. I'm the president of the Range View Metropolitan District as well as the president of Pure Cycle Corporation, and we are the applicant for this 1041 process. We're happy to be here tonight. I'd like to acknowledge and thank staff's help, Molly, Jason, and Jan's help for all this, the middle of this application, and working through this application over the last several months. What I'd like to do is just spend a few minutes covering the specific details of this application. This is an application covering certain water, wastewater facilities, and reclaimed water facilities for the master plan development of the Sky Ranch project, which is about 930 acres, located off of I-70 predominantly at the Monahan alignment. That's the Air Park Road exit. We're working on all of the water facilities on a master plan basis, so this is an integrated, fully developed master plan for both all water and wastewater facilities. Also, within the county is some applications for our first filing of this, which is about 155 acres, about 500 units, that a lot of these facilities will serve. But this includes sort of the water supply, a brief overview of what the water supply is, the treatment and storage facilities that are components to that water supply, water transmission and distribution, how that water supply gets to the site, wastewater reclamation. So we treat the wastewater. We reclaim that up. This is a zero discharge facility, so we would be taking 100% of those wastewater return flows back. We'll be storing them onsite. We'll be reusing those water supplies in a dual distribution water system where we'll provide that water to open spaces, common areas, parks, and recreational areas, and then the reclaimed water storage and retreatment process of that. So with that, let me start by just giving you an orientation. Sky Ranch is a mixed-use master plan community. It has up to 4,400 residential units, about 1.3 million square feet of commercial, retail, light industrial uses up along the interstate. Location kind of gives you an aerial. We're in relative proximity to the expanding urbanized area. The city of Aurora is our neighbor to the west along the Powhatan alignment, and to the south, south of Sixth Avenue, and then predominantly all the way up to Hayesmont Avenue. So there's this out parcel between what you see is the Mobile Home Park there. Let me see if I can give you that. This out parcel, this is really the actual out parcel from the city of Aurora standpoint. So you have this square mile, half of this square mile, and then these three-quarter sections that are still remaining in the county. So what this application covers, the water and wastewater facilities, we have over... This project has a lot of water infrastructure, water, water rights, water storage assets, and water infrastructure. We have over 25,000 acre feet of groundwater supply that is working in conjunction and partnership with the state of Colorado on the Lowry property. We have about 3,300 acre feet of surface water supplies on the two surface features that flow through the property in Boxhelder and Coal Creek. We have a very large component of surface water storage, which is a very important component for water supply in the Denver area, particularly to manage that surface water supplies. We have about 30,000 acre feet of decreed storage, but about 90,000 acre feet of practical storage. When you take a look at the sites themselves, they have good topography there and good relief to be able to develop additional storage capacity. We look to work with a regional opportunity with our storage capacity. We have additional regional water supplies through the WISE project. So that's a water supply project that's in partnership with Aurora Water, Denver Water, and 11 of the Arapaho and Douglas County water providers in the area. About 30 miles of transmission and distribution pipelines, finished water storage, raw water storage. And we manage our Denver Basin supplies through a program where we develop the water supplies and we use aquifer storage and recovery in those pools as well. So we have a very large footprint of existing water supplies that meet the demands for this particular project and far beyond this particular project. This will give you kind of an orientation. I probably should have backed up. I-70 is right along here. The Monahan Road entrance to the project will be right along here. This particular property is our first phase of the development. It's that 155 acres. We do have a five-acre out parcel right here. This is the location of the wastewater treatment facility. What I did want to do is give you some visual context of what that wastewater treatment facility is going to look like over on this side of the property. So this will be our eastern boundary. This is property that's owned and annexed into the city of Aurora, but this will be where we locate our water treatment tank, pump station, and some storage facility or treatment facility there. This also includes a depiction of where our reused irrigation water storage reservoir is. So the purple pipe system, we have a discharge that comes out of the wastewater treatment plant. We bring that back to our irrigation storage reservoir, and then we use that line for all of the irrigation demands. We have previously been before you before a location extent for our water line extension that came up from the Lowry Range, so we built a 24-inch line over this winter to be able to deliver water supply to the project. This is kind of a depiction of the loop system for our water supply transmission line. As most people are really interested in the visual context of a wastewater reclamation facility, this is a... This will be one of the state-of-the-art recreational facilities for the region. This is a view of it. It's largely an enclosed and underground buried facility. So this will give you kind of a vantage point of what that looks like. We have some maintenance buildings. This will contain the bulk of the treatment process, which will be predominantly below ground. This will give you some of the visual context. This is a view looking west of the facility. Is that right? No, I think that's looking east. This will be a view looking west. This will be a view looking north. So between having the facility developed in a way that really minimizes the impact to the surrounding neighborhoods as well as the surrounding landowners, we look to really have this state-of-the-art facility and be a zero-discharge facility to be able to reuse this valuable water resource. So be a little depiction about the storage tank. So we'll have a 1 million gallon storage tank on the site. The storage tank is... Will be... This is the first stage. This is a development here. It's covered up by the picture, but this will be I-70 up here, Monahan Road here. So we have an existing improved gravel road access to be able to get some of our facilities here. We'll be at a high point along here. Additionally, we'll have access to the facility through an improved gravel road over to the tank facility. And then this will be one of the arterial collector roads in the project as well in future phases. And as that road is installed, then we'll switch the access from the gravel road access to a more paved, improved access road as that road is improved. So this will be a master plan site for the facility, and then we have two ways of entering the site as the project extends through its multiple stations. As I mentioned, this is a reclaimed water system. We will take 100% of those wastewater return flows and reuse those water supplies. So water comes out of the water reclamation facility through a dual distribution purple pipe back to our storage reservoir, and then back into the irrigation system throughout that. So we want to make sure that we use and reuse our water supplies directly onsite. Lastly, the other feature to this, this will be about four miles south of... This is Quincy Road. This will be Watkins Road. So at the interchange of Quincy and Watkins Road, we've got a master plan complex. And so this site really will have some of the future phases of what it is that we're looking for for development of water facilities, not only for Sky Ranch, but also for some of our other activities as the state land board looks to build out the Lowry Range. It'll be able to integrate some of our surface water supplies or surface water storage facilities, and this is sort of a master site campus. We're working with the state land board on that. This is their preferred site. We already have acquired the property from the state land board because it's exactly where they would like to see some of those facilities. So we're mindful about that location, not only from a functional standpoint for the water utility, but also from a functional standpoint in terms of the land use for what our partners at the state land board would like to do. There's multiple types of facilities here that include, you know, electrical facilities, what we do with water chemistry, additional storage, some shop purposes. We actually office at the East Quincy Energy Park right across the street, but we'll have a campus for our own operations onsite as the phases of this build out. So those are kind of the real broad overview of that, and I'd like to open it up. If you have any questions, I could try and detail any of the specifics of any of this.
Anybody have questions?
I have a question.
You bet.
Okay. Water supply, the surface reservoirs, who owns them?
Yes, yes. So those are adjudicated sites. The reason those sites are pretty unique is we have been working on those for a number of years, and they're... We've got several permits. We've got them adjudicated, and then something called a non-jurisdictional determination by the Corps of Engineers, which means there's no federal nexus to it. And these are literally the only two sites in the Denver metropolitan area left that have that non-jurisdictional determination.
So they are operating?
No, no. They're just adjudicated and permitted sites.
So that you can build them? How would you... Would you do liners or...?
No, we would excavate these sites. They're big, big reservoir sites, so...
Excavate them and then you line them or just leave them?
Well, we line them with some bentonite material that does actually hold the water, but it's not a physical man-made liner. Yes.
So when you say "we" own, is that Pure Cycle?
It's Range View Metropolitan District. Yes, in conjunction with Pure Cycle. So Pure Cycle does have rights to help Range View develop those, but ultimately, as these facilities are built, they are actually owned and titled by Range View.
So I'd like to actually explain the connections here.
Mm-hmm.
PCY Holdings, that's owned by Pure Cycle?
Yes, it's a wholly-owned subsidiary.
And they purchased Sky Ranch?
That's correct. So that's a land interest. Yes.
So PCY Holdings actually purchased Sky Ranch?
Correct.
So do they now own Sky Ranch?
We do. Yeah. So we have two hats. We have a hat as the water utility, which is what this application is, and then we also have the hat as the land developer, as Pure Cycle, as the land developer owning the real estate of the Sky Ranch project. A little bit unique.
Yes. So... So Range View provides water and wastewater for Skyview project?
Sky Ranch, that's correct. Yes.
And so do they own the parcel of ground that they're going to build us on inside Sky?
Yes. Yeah. So Pure Cycle will deed over those facilities to Range View so that they own all of that property interest.
And so Pure Cycle does all the design, engineering, financing, and O&amp;M and everything for the water treatment facilities, water provider?
That's correct. So those are contract operation contracts.
So what... I guess I don't understand that Skyview and Pure Cycle own... Are doing this 1041 together? I mean, is it a partnership or...?
Yes, correct. I mean, ultimately, what you have is Pure Cycle, which owns the land of Sky Ranch, and then they will dedicate certain of those interests, the water treatment plant's location, the wastewater treatment location for Range View. Pure Cycle will provide the financing upfront because these are built in advance of having homes there. So then, as tap fees come in, they get reimbursed for that, and then ultimately Range View owns all those assets. And then, on an operational perspective, Pure Cycle is a water and wastewater operating company, so we operate those systems on a contractual relationship with Range View over time. So that's the relationship between the two.
Yeah, I'm trying. I'm a little slow, but I was trying to understand how the connection with Sky Ranch's 1041 application. So...
Say that again.
The 1041 application. So if I understand it right, Skyview and Pure Cycle will be partners in that 1041?
Actually, Range View is the applicant, so they will actually hold the permit.
Okay. So Sky... I get a little lost when it says Sky Ranch. So it's just going to be Range View that will be looking at?
That's right.
At the 1041?
As the county addresses that peremptee, that peremptee is Range View.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
So just to clarify, are gray water and reclaimed water the same thing?
Yeah, they're not. We really try and avoid a gray water type of delineation. So reclaimed water, so the state regulates wastewater, wastewater discharge, wastewater reuse through several types of mechanisms. And you have the ability, your wastewater treatment plant, when you file for a permit, you can get a permit with a designation that allows to meet water discharges to meet Clean Water Act regulations, an EPA Clean Water Regulation requirement. Or you can get it that you need, if you need to reuse that water supply, pull it out, re-treat that, you go that up to another regulation, which is what we call Regulation 84, that allows that to be used in a reuse system, which means it's safe for human contact. It doesn't have quite the aesthetics, so you're not going to want to be, you know, laying on the sprinkler head, sucking out of the sprinkler head, but it's safe for ingestion. It just doesn't have some of that taste and aesthetic qualities of your domestic water supply.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
I wasn't listening. So I understand gray water and purple water. So the gray water, it isn't treated, correct? It comes... It comes...
Yeah. Boy, everybody wants to put a labeling on gray water because it's not, you know, I mean, there is affluent, which is untreated.
Right.
You know, that's the stuff that needs to be treated. Gray water has a delineation that people have really gotten away from, to not use that term. You use treated wastewater or raw affluent water as the two water supplies, and then it's just to the level of treatment. Are you treating that? And it depends. Are you treating that for discharge to the stream? Are you treating that for reuse qualifications?
So like the purple water is treated to a certain standard?
Well, it doesn't... Purple water doesn't even have to be treated wastewater. Purple water can be just partially treated raw water. So it meets a certain water quality standard. So when you see a purple hydrant, that can be just raw water that doesn't have the finished treated water treatment process to it. It is non-potable. That's correct.
So why are you providing two kinds of purple and gray water systems?
We're not. We're only supplying treated water, treated Reg 84, highly-treated wastewater.
Highly-treated. So I'll ask you another question.
Yeah.
So I guess it's Range View. Are they going to have... Are they going to provide this for other customers other than Sky?
So currently, our service area is Sky Ranch and the Lowry Range.
Yeah.
Those are our only two service areas.
So are you anticipating providing treated water to like eastern Arapaho? Is that your goal, to sell more water, not Sky, but Range View?
We have additional water supplies beyond what the projected needs are for both Sky Ranch and what we know to date for the state land board's intended uses for Lowry Range. So to the extent that there are additional opportunities in the I-70 corridor where there are water shortage areas, existing communities that need supplemental water supply that are on a Denver Basin water supply, that would like a more renewable water supply, those are opportunities that we can use some of our infrastructure to extend those to other areas in the corridor. And those are opportunities that we would like to seek and opportunities if it works for both parties.
Thank you.
I have one question. The letter from the Office of the State Engineer referenced what would happen in dry years if you are prepared and whether your supply would cover that. Do you feel that you have enough water for that?
We do. We do. So we... The surface water supplies, really, what you want to have is a mix between groundwater supplies and surface water supplies. Surface water supplies can be highly variable. If you have a high snowpack, good runoff, you have good wet water in those surface water features, you can divert that. Oh, there it goes. You can divert that. You can store that. You know, Mother Nature's great. She stores our water for us for six months of the year, but also has a sense of humor because we get it in 45 days. So if you don't have the ability to store it, it runs on by your system, and the demand for our supplies don't pick up, our irrigation demands don't pick up until even after that spring runoff. So that storage is a critical component on that. When you have a dry year, you want to augment some of those supplies with either water that you've stored or water that you have as groundwater supplies. You can either do that through first-used groundwater supply or an aquifer storage and recharge, where you're taking some of those surface water supplies, putting those, banking those into the aquifer so that they don't evaporate, they don't have contact with surface water features, so you minimize the retreatment of that water supply, and then you can reuse that water supply in your system. So we do have a very well-balanced supply between Denver Basin supplies, reuse supplies, and surface water supplies.
Thank you.
Another question. So aquifer storage?
Yep.
How does that work? Do you treat the water before it goes in there?
You do. So you have a requirement that you must have potable water that goes into those aquifers. Yes.
Thanks. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I guess at this point, we will open the public hearing. We have several people that have signed in, but nobody indicated that they want to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to Sky Ranch 1041? You can come forward and state your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Michael Fonsak, 836 Imboden Road in Watkins, and I have a question for the gentleman. He mentioned you have two access roads for your water treatment plant. Why is that? To meet for two access roads?
Yeah. So we have an initial stage access road to the water treatment plant, which will come in. There's an existing, let me get there. There's an existing improved gravel road that'll come in here, and then it'll have an improved gravel road over to this site. So that's that road. That's a depiction of that road right there. This road is in future phases, so that will be an arterial collection road, and all of this road will go away. And so once this road is developed, we'll switch that access, get rid of this roadway, and just access directly. This is that F Street right here. It'll be renamed to something appropriate.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I do want to correct one thing that Scott had reminded me of. The wastewater site is through an easement that ultimately is an easement granted from Pure Cycle to Range View to allow access to that site. So that's a bit of a distinction on how that actual title conveyance goes.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to Sky Ranch? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and do you have any other comments you want to make?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's get out my question.
Okay.
I've got a question for you. Just out of curiosity, the WISE connection you have for water?
Yes.
Surface water?
Right.
So you just mix that if you want, Range View, do they just mix it into the Denver groundwater when you need it, or...?
So that is a... That is another potable water supply?
Like, I mean, you can actually, you just do the mixing on the percentages you want based on supply you have to...
Exactly. So you really do demand management on that. You can take WISE deliveries at a certain capacity rate. You can have 100% of those deliveries or take up... Into your system, directly into your system, or you can take 100% of those deliveries, recharge the aquifer, and use your other supplies as part of that system. So it's a very flexible interconnect and transmission.
So is the WISE water pre-treated or...?
No, it's fully treated.
Fully.
Yes, potable water coming out of Aurora's distribution system.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, does the... Bring it back to the Planning Commission?
I got a question.
I'm sorry. I'm lost on this because the... It says here that Sky Ranch, D-U-D, and it says that... I'm confused on the 1041. Who the 1041 goes to? Because it doesn't... It's not clear.
Well, if the permitting process is, it would be granted to Range View.
Range View.
Yes. That is correct.
And that's what we're going to vote on?
Yes.
Range View. And nothing to do with Sky... Because Sky Ranch is on here, and that's what's confusing, see?
So you're right. The land development portion has nothing to do with this application. You will see that.
Oh, I understand.
Because we're in front of you as Pure Cycle, as the developer of the property, but this application is just for the water and the sewer facilities for Range View.
So it's Range View, not Sky Ranch that we're voting on?
I guess that's correct, but the Sky Ranch is the use of that, where that's actually being...
Well, I know what's being used, but I'm talking about, maybe I'd ask you. It doesn't ring. If we're going to... If the application is Sky Ranch...
The application is Range View, is what I understand.
It is true for the Sky Ranch development, much like you see for Copper Lake.
It's different than the application for the subsequent development approvals.
Right.
Yeah, I understand that. IDP plans.
But if it's Range View, and they're the ones that are asking for the 1041 approval, why is Sky Ranch even on there?
Yeah, that may be... You may have a good point.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, you might have a point that that's... That that may be better titled as the 1041 application.
1041 application.
I think that... I think you might be right.
I'm Scott Lehman.
I'm Scott Lehman with Range View and Pure Cycle. And the reason we're in front of the county with this ten forty-one application is the requirement that any extension of an existing water system to serve new customers, more than twenty-five new customers, requires this process. So that's why it's tied specifically to Sky Ranch, because we're expanding our existing service area to serve the Sky Ranch property. If we were just expanding to serve additional customers, customers at Arapahoe County Fairgrounds, which we serve, or to the Department of Human Services, which we serve, we would not have to do that because they're within our identified service area. But this is a new customer for the district, and that's what mandated the ten forty-one process, is my understanding. So you do have to identify a use rather than just a blanket distribu, or a blanket expansion of our service area. And that's why it is tied to Sky Ranch. We had to show the financial capability of doing this and that where the wastewater, so it is, uh, development-specific on the ten forty-one.
I don't get it. I defer to counsel. Because, because if, if they're going to provide possibly services from this ten forty-one to other customers. So, I can't understand why it's specific to Sky Ranch. A Sky Ranch is going to purchase the water, but...
Wouldn't they have to file again if they provide it to another large customer? Do another ten forty-one?
I don't think so. You get a ten forty-one, you got it.
Set over twenty-five.
I, I think since Range View is going to be operating, building, managing the facility for the Sky Ranch, the Range View is the applicant, kind of on behalf of Sky Ranch. But I think there's some indication that they're doing it as a partnership of some sort.
Pure Cycle's...
Because Pure Cycle, see, it's not Sky Ranch. But Pure Cycle and Sky, I mean, it's really convoluted, this whole thing. Not saying it's anything wrong with it, but it's just really convoluted.
I'm not sure I can answer.
Okay. Because I just say, it just doesn't make sense.
Because Range View needs to, in my opinion, Range View would need to sign off on it.
Okay. So they're, they're the ones.
I think it's because they call it, the treatment plant's called Sky Ranch Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant.
But, but it's, they're not the applicant. Range View is the applicant, because they are the provider of the water. Pure Cycle's the provider of the money to build this, but Range View is going to operate.
We're talking water and wastewater.
Yeah, two things.
So all these four, both those will be Range View.
They are in twine.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Have anybody interested in making a motion?
I'll make the motion. In the case of A S I sixteen dash zero zero five for the Sky Ranch Water and Wastewater Treatment Plants and Associated Facilities, Water Supply Facility, Reclaim Water Pond and Pipelines, ten forty-one. Uh, the planning commissioners have reviewed the staff report, including exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and the public comment as presented at the public hearing. I hereby move to recommend approval of this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall make any modifications to plans as requested by the Public Works and Development Department prior to the start of any construction on this project. Two, conduct a burrowing owl survey prior to the construction of the Water and Wastewater Treatment Plants and Associated Facilities, Water Supply Facility, Reclaim Water Pond and Pipelines. Three, if the reclaim water pond has a man-made liner, a means for escape shall be installed for the protection of animals that fall into the pond. And four, the applicant shall develop an integrated weed management plan to address noxious weeds on the sites to be developed.
Do you want to, do you have any more comments?
No, I'd like to second.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Okay, do we need a roll call?
Commissioner Laxus?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Slaugh?
Yes.
On a five to nothing vote, the motion passes.
Thank you all.
And just to make a note for anyone here who might be interested in attending the next phase of this, this is a recommendation that goes on to the Board of County Commissioners, so there will be a public hearing with the board as well.
Thank you. Okay, the next item for consideration is case number P sixteen dash zero two one, Prosper subdivision number one preliminary plat, with Bill Skinner making the presentation for the county.
Okay, the commissioners may want to, I'm assuming the discussions about the plat and the FDP may overlap, because...
Are you done together?
Uh, we can, but I want to be clear on the record that the P sixteen zero two one final plat, or preliminary plat, covers an area that is not as large as the FDP. So while we talk about them together, the boundaries are not necessarily exactly the same. However, the preliminary plat area is entirely within the final plat proposal. So, just something to be aware of as we go through. Having said that, I'm going to speak briefly first to the final development plan, and then I'll circle back to the preliminary plat. And I'm gonna make a correction to the staff report for the final development plan. It's a complicated set of drawings. The applicants are adapting and adjusting to engineering criteria as we go along. And one of the things that, uh, we've got to catch up detail on is the FDP boundary, some of the earlier drawings before roads were shifted in one particular corner up near the northwest part of the plat, of the, of the FDP area. Um, there's a commercial area depicted up there. Your staff report, I put in your staff report on page four that this included twenty areas of commercial zoning in the FDP. It does not. There's no commercial brought into this FDP at this time. Having said that, the Prosper number one FDP, um, is brought before us by Vogel and Associates on account, on behalf of Prosper Farms Investments LLC. It's a seven hundred and forty-three acre final development plan that includes, uh, proposes lots for nine hundred and seventy single-family detached residential units, sites for parks, a significant amount of open space corridors throughout, a community center, a school site, and a fire station. With the exception of the single-family detached, we will see additional, more detailed plans for community center, rec center, school sites, fire station at a later date. In fact, staff has the preliminary copies of that in, that application is in right now. So, don't want you to think that you're simply looking at, say, the community center, well, here's a blank oval with no detail. You will get to see those details at a later time. It's a fairly large FDP, but when we get down to it, it is a final development plan. And so staff looked at it like we would any other. It was compared against the Prosper preliminary development plan. Um, having moved through that, we find that it complies with the preliminary development plan and other county regulations that are associated with it. I'm familiar with Jeff Vogel's work, I expect. Do you have a presentation tonight? Yeah, the presentation tonight. Jeff's presentations tend to be pretty detailed and offer better detail than I can off the cuff and through my reports, so I want to move us to that. The preliminary plat is for a smaller area. The P sixteen zero two one case, the preliminary plat at this time, we're looking at two hundred and twenty-three acres, only encompassing four hundred and forty-two of the single-family detached residential sites, sites for parks, the community center, and of course, the infrastructure and tracks and roadways. Uh, that's illustrating what I'm talking about, having a difference in size. There's nothing wrong with this. And we will see a final plat action eventually as this gets tied down at a later date. I'm just pausing while people get comfortable. They're, you know, looking through and reading, so I want to make sure you have a chance to find what you're looking for before I proceed.
I would like to make a comment that Bennett has been incorrectly spelled in several places, and it needs two Ts.
Thank you very much. I actually noticed that in one of my own emails today, and I will correct that. Appreciate that. Spell check actually caught me out on that. It kept changing it from correct to wrong.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I have to train spell check. Thank you, though. Something else that's pretty crucial here tonight. So there are only two commit, two conditions on this. The second condition lists four different agencies that staff wanted to make sure the applicant addressed their comments. Uh, today, I, actually yesterday, I believe, we started a conversation where Vogel Associates said, "What are you doing, staff? We've already addressed those comments." I said, "Okay, that's fair, let's go back and look." And I went back through it, and on my own, looking at the materials, said, "Yeah, I've got three of those agencies taken care of. What about the fire district?" And came back to Vogel and Associates. They came back to me with more information. Yeah, I'm comfortable. They have also addressed the fire district's concerns. Um, some of these activities occurred during the PDP, which was being handled by Sherman Fair. And about seventy percent of this process Sherman handled, so I'm catching up after the fact. Luckily, Sherman's is next to me. He's a part-time employee with us right now, and he fills in the blanks as I find them. Uh, but staff is withdrawing the recommendation for condition two on both of these. Uh, we don't like to put conditions on applicants that have already addressed the matter. It's just not good business. So staff is withdrawing that. If the planning commission wants to discuss that, we're completely ready and open to have those discussions. Uh, we just don't see a need for it at this time. I don't have a...
I think this, this is very good to hear, that you've already addressed these. I get a little uncomfortable when these plans come to me with this big, open, satisfied concerns addressed by blah, 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 blah. You know, all these entities. It just seems to me that we're getting something that's incomplete when it has that condition on it. So I'm glad to hear that's all been taken care of.
Yep, we try to tie down the loose ends before we get to you. We can't do it all the time, but we do make an effort. Um, I'd kind of like to step aside and have Vogel Associates come up and give their presentation. We'll need to set up hardware briefly. But if you have no further questions for me, I remain available throughout the evening, of course.
Bill?
Just briefly, the, the staff's legal counsel wants me to come through. We did provide notice for the property. Letters were sent to the adjacent properties. Staff asked for sites to be erected at three different locations so that people both approaching the larger FDP area and encountering the one on lot adjacency to a public right-of-way, post, signs were posted there. Um, we're good as far as your jurisdiction to hear the case tonight. Both cases tonight.
The desktop, I'm assuming there's two monitors.
Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Jeff Vogel. I'm with Vogel and Associates, four seven five West Twelfth Avenue, Denver, eight zero two zero four. Um, we are the land planners and landscape architects on the Prosper project. And we are pleased to come before you this evening on, um, the first phase of Prosper in terms of a final development plan. It's our first neighborhood. Um, as Mr. Skinner alluded to earlier, you know, we've, uh, worked with the county over the last few years on our preliminary development plan that's been approved, our ten forty-one. That was approved. And then, uh, within the last year, our water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, um, location extends in, uh, ten forty-one. So we're pleased to come before you on our first neighborhood. Um, and so with that, uh, one of the things that, I know there were some of the planning commissioners that, that were not here back in two thousand fifteen, and we got our preliminary development plan approved. But there were, there were some very key cornerstones, um, that were incorporated into our master plan, um, when we did that preliminary development plan. And again, carry through, through the final development plan that we're going to present to you tonight. And I thought it would be, um, helpful to review some of those and then also illustrate how they apply to the final development plan. And one of the, you know, there, there are five basic, um, cornerstones. And the first one was connected community and neighborhoods. So that was important in all different aspects with regards to, when you see connected through a street system, through walkable blocks, through trails, through open space, creating, uh, community focal points, that being parks, things like that, gathering places. Um, that was a, a, an important cornerstone, and we'll talk about what we've done to try to achieve that. Um, environmental and cultural awareness. Again, another consideration that we look at at a very macro level with the master plan, and now as we design, as we delve into the FDP, um, preserving, um, open space, preserving existing drainages to their natural state. Um, again, that's always been kind of a, an important point for, um, for Prosper. Education, um, you know, Prosper, I mean, again, in our master plan, we had provide sites for K through H to our high school. Um, also provided provisions to our land use for even private institutions, if it's a community college or, or something of that nature. Um, so it, it's what we call the Prosper Education Plan. And tonight, again, with this first neighborhood, we want to start honoring that, um, with, 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 start with configuring a school site. Um, inspired design, um, that's also a very important cornerstone. Uh, need it be through architecture, site planning, um, and landscape. Um, that's an important thing. Again, we really want to differentiate Prosper from other, um, neighborhoods. We don't want it to be just another subdivision. We really want it to be a place that, um, you know, that stands on its own and has integrity with regards to design and quality. Um, health and wellness, another cornerstone of Prosper. Um, and so, we talked about health and wellness. As I was talking about that, you know, having walkable blocks, having gathering areas, having educational facilities, um, a very meaningful and comprehensive trail system is also, um, helps in that, in that, in that regard. Likewise, learning opportunities, um, at different levels beyond the school system. Again, all contribute to the health and wellness. So those are some of the cornerstones, again, that we talked about. Well, actually, even before we put pencil to paper on Prosper, that these are things that are near and dear to the community. Um, this is, uh, what you see in front of you. This is the, um, the approved plan, preliminary development plan. This is the land use plan that was approved on February tenth, ten, two thousand... that was approved on February tenth, in two thousand fifteen. Um, and it was also included, obviously, in the ten forty-one for new communities. Again, as a background, um, this shows really kind of the planning configurations, the land uses. Uh, what you see here in the northeast corner is final development plan site number one. And with regards to land use in context, um, this is I seventy, Interstate seventy, existing Watkins Road that's located here. Um, existing Sixth Avenue is located right here. It's a two-lane road that intersects with Watkins Road. And then, um, with regards to the master plan, this is realigned Watkins Road. And then Sixth Avenue, um, that's also to connect to Prosper for the Arapahoe County twenty thirty-five plan, transportation plan. So, um, with regards to land use, um, what you see in the yellow color, colors, the medium density planning areas. And then the lower density planning areas that are on the, um, eastern edge. And then in the green color was the open space ag, um, designation that we had as well. So, um, as Mr. Skinner said, um, as we go forward tonight, the final development plan is in front of you honors the planning areas, the land uses, the densities that were approved back in, um, two thousand fifteen. This is, um, more of a detailed, um, drawing. Uh, this is an enlargement of the final development plan that I'll walk through. Um, it is approximately, what you see here is approximately seven hundred and fifty-four acres, nine hundred and seventy homes. Uh, again, that'll be phased over a period of time that I'll also talk about a little bit on the phasing. Um, and there are six types of home sites, um, that we have in the FDP again. Um, as illustrated on the land use plan, the, the higher density is located further to the west, closer to existing Watkins Road. As you, um, go to the east, the density decreases to, um, half acre and one acre lots, home sites. With regards to amenities, and I'll talk a little about the open space, as Mr. Skinner said, um, we are, um, planning a community center that'll serve as a focal point and that is, um, proposed to be, um, constructed with our initial phase. Um, we think that's important, creating, um, um, a community center and a primary amenity in the first phase. And again, we will come before the planning commission, um, later on, specifics on that, on that, um, facility, just because that's a separate application. And then also what we call a discovery center, discovery cell center, that'll be located up here, that'll also serve as a community gathering area, meeting place. Um, that also too will be coming before you in greater detail. So, um, to back up a little bit, this is again, existing Watkins Road, existing Sixth Avenue comes through here like this. As illustrated on the land use plan, um, the Arapahoe County twenty thirty-five transportation plan, um, calls out Sixth Avenue as a primary east-west arterial someday. And so the, the Prosper land use plan that again I showed you honors that. And with this first FDP, this will be proposed Sixth Avenue, um, as a major, or as an arterial. Um, again, that will also be phased from two lanes to four lanes over time. Okay? And that's consistent with the, with the Prosper master transportation plan that we had submitted and got approved when we did the preliminary development plan. Um, the intent with this initial FDP, this initial final development plan is to utilize existing Watkins Road as it is. Um, we're not, we're not planning on realigning Watkins Road at this time. Um, and so the interchange is located up here to the north. As you descend that to the south on Watkins Road, you will access the FDP to the east by what we have designated as a connector road. And this is like, this would be a four-lane, um, road. It'd be like, almost like a collector status. That road too will be phased from two lanes to four lanes as the FDP, um, builds out. You'll descend through the south. You'll come to the community center, which again is the primary amenity. This is a one-way, um, large, almost like a gloria, if you will, or, or a roundabout. That we see as, again, a gathering point, but it's also a, a traffic calming device as well. And then the connector road will proceed to the south and eventually connect the cross county run to the other planning areas that are approved on the preliminary development plan. So the circulation system that we're showing here, again, if you look at the land use plan, it's consistent with what we had in the master plan. Um, the other thing worth noting, um, that's important is, is what we call more of a modified street network and you'll grid, uh, it's a modified grid network where we're utilizing, um, connected streets and walkable blocks and everything connects. We do not have a lot of cul-de-sacs, especially in our higher density program. And doing that modified grid kind of gives you that more small town flavor. Um, it makes blocks really walkable. You're able to, um, you have alternative choices, um, for transportation. Um, and so you're dispersing traffic a lot more effectively than if you just have one road with a cul-de-sac and everybody has to load up onto a collector. So dispersing traffic, um, is a big consideration for us. Um, also as we develop, um, the final development plan, getting those second points of access and emergency access, again, with a modified grid, uh, provides greater opportunity to do that than a bunch of dead-end cul-de-sacs. So, and it goes back again to those principles I talked to you about, about a connected community, um, providing a walkable community. So again, the more walkable blocks, the more that you can circulate through the neighborhood with alternative choices is, is one of the primary components. As we go to the southeast, when we get to more of a rural, um, or lower state, or lo- lower density product, again, these are one acre home sites here. We are using a little bit more of an organic, um, network, um, for the streets, but again, we're providing connections and loops on themselves and multiple, um, access points to each of these. Um, another important principle, um, that's incorporated is I talked about the community center again being a primary network, but we also have, uh, pocket parks. Um, a variety of pocket parks that I'll talk about a little bit more in detail, um, active and passive open space, all which is located within a quarter mile of, of each home site. And that's important because, um, it's statistically proven that residents will walk within a quarter mile to something. It's a convenient, it's a convenient walk. And so that was, again, a really important factor for, um, for Prosper to make sure that you could walk to a park or you could walk to a trail or you could walk to the community center, um, and that it was convenient. Uh, so dispersing and, and breaking those things up are also important. Another consideration, as I talked about in the master plan, and again, is that perimeter, open space that surrounds Prosper in the land use plan. Um, the FDP honors that, um, as Mr. Skinner, um, indicated in his staff report. Um, there is potential oil and gas site, um, operation sites that can be, uh, located out here. We do have a surface use agreement with ConocoPhillips on that. Um, right now they are, um, looking at their plans and their designs and trying to figure out what they're going to do or if they're going to do in some of the, in some of these operation sites or not. So that's something that we have, um, worked with ConocoPhillips. Um, you know, they, they have mineral rights. We honor that. We try to work with them the best we can, um, to make sure that, you know, we're, we're integrated. What you see in the dark colors, let's go through the lots real quick, is, is the darker colors are our smaller lots, those are five thousand square foot home sites, six thousand square foot home sites, eight thousand, and then again, the half and one acre home sites to the southeast of the, of the project. More intense density in the center and then as you radiate away. We talked about environmental, um, sensitivity and importance. This is the Coyote Run drainage that exists today. And so we're continuing to honor that like we have in the preliminary development plan. Prosper has a master drainage plan that was approved in the preliminary development plan. And since then, um, as part of the final development plan process, we've also done a more detailed drainage report, including, um, coordinating with urban drainage, flood control on, um, Coyote Run and, um, the respective tributaries. So that's also been, um, um, addressed as part of our, our FDP. Um, as I said, um, education's important. Um, we do, we are locating a ten acre, um, school site here. It's also shared with a park site as well. Um, that was something in our preliminary development plan. Shared school park facilities so you can leverage, um, amenities and, um, financial, um, capabilities with parks and rec and with schools. So they have shared facilities. This is something that we've done very successfully in, uh, in Denver and even with Denver Public Schools. So we do have, um, the school site located here, um, for a couple of reasons. Again, walkability. It's, it's, it's very accessible with the neighborhood. It's also located along the Coyote Run Drainage where there will also be a trail. So that was another thing that was really important to Prosper is that we want to locate the school sites so kids could walk and bike to work. Um, and including on the regional trails, um, great separated crossings. We also are locating, we've talked with, we've worked with Bennett Fire Department on, um, a fire station site. They, they have the ability to serve the site. Um, it's within their service area, obviously, but they are going to need another, um, facility. And as Mr. Skinner said, you know, we've coordinated with them. They had some comments about, um, funding and where the site would be located and will it be dedicated as opposed to them having to buy it? So those are all things that we've addressed with the FDP with them as well. Um, so that's kind of the, the overall of the, of the first FDP. The other important, back to streets real quick. One of the things that we've really worked closely with staff on and we're really excited about is, again, I keep talking about walkability and, and pedestrian mobility and, and designing safe streets and safe crossings is really important. And so the connector street, for example, here, which is one of our visitor streets, including Sixth Avenue, it'll include a detached sidewalk. It'll include medians that provide pedestrians when they're crossing, a, a, a place, um, to stop in, in the middle of traffic. Is almost kind of a refuge for them, if you will. And then the other thing that we've done is on the local streets, we've worked with staff that at these, this is an intersection. This is an enlargement of a local street intersection. So this is a house. This is a driveway, house driveway. Is we created these bump outs, um, if you will. So these are the walks, the sidewalks here. And then we did these bump outs, so it necks down at the intersection. So when you're driving to the intersection, you know, when you get to a narrow street or something, you have a tendency to slow down, something's happening. And so those are really safe areas, um, to cross. And this is something, again, we really worked with, with the engineering department and, and in Arapahoe County and I think we're, we're really excited about this just because it's, it's going to also change the look and the character. It's just going to make it feel a little more intimate and not just like a sub, a typical suburban street where people are constantly speeding along. Um, real quickly, um, again, we'll go into further detail when we come before you with the location extents, but these are just some quick renderings of our discovery center, which is our discovery market center. That would be located at, um, up in the corner of Watkins Road and our connector road, right at our entrance. And so the intent is to do a, um, something that's reminiscent of a grain elevator. Again, as you, as some of you may recall, you know, one of our characters of, of Prosper is we want it to be reminiscent of an eastern Colorado agricultural community. Um, and so doing a grain, a grain elevator that would also include meeting space in here. You can come in and learn about the community. But again, long-term, this would be also be used for groups and clubs that will, might want to meet here. We also are talking about doing a pavilion where we would have farmers markets and things like that. And again, we'll go into a lot more detail with that when we come before you on those plans. And then the community center really quick, um, again, was to be a primary amenity. Would include a multi-purpose room, a fitness facility, a family pool. Again, all kind of architecturally taking on more of an agrarian motif, uh, more of agrarian character. Um, so we're pretty excited a- about that. This is the, uh, the, the open space plan, um, for phase one, parks and trails. As I said, we have a, a hierarchy of parks and amenities. The primary amenity being the community center. And then we have by-pocket parks, um, all which are designed to be gathering and focal points for each of the neighborhoods. And each one of the parks is programmed differently. Some of them have some different, some commonalities such as multi-purpose playfields. Each one of these, these are three of the parks. And then we also have some parks, for example, have an emphasis, including a community garden. As we've talked about in the past when it comes to Prosper, you know, uh, food production, locally grown food is very important to us. Farming the perimeter of the property at a macro level is something we are still intending on and doing. Um, again, we are the farmers. We do farm the property today. We don't lease it out. It's us. And so we want to continue to do that, but we want to bring it down to the neighborhood level. So the community gardens, uh, we think are really important. We do have those programmed in some of these. Uh, some of these, like, for example, this has an orchard, so having a variety of fruit trees and, and, and different level of food production is another important consideration. This park has a little bit more active sports park. It's oriented towards kids, uh, with more sports courts and things like that. You know, they all have a pavilion, a shade structure. They have a playground. The two of them do. They have a playground. And then a multi-purpose playfield. Um, there's, there's two other parks that we have. This is a neighborhood park, um, that's located. You can see barely here on the map. There's a, um, neighborhood park that we have here and that's more of our sports park. And so that would have, again, a larger multi-purpose playfield, basketball courts, sports courts, two playgrounds for younger kids and older kids, um, a larger pavilion, um, hard skate games. Uh, so that's kind of our neighborhood sports park. And then this park we're pretty excited about. This is kind of at the confluence of a bunch of neighborhoods and that's right here in our FDP. And this park is, is more of an educational interpretive park. So again, this has a community garden, um, program in which the, the shelter's located in the middle of the plots. So neighbors can garden and then, um, um, you know, gather and have potlucks and those kinds of things. Uh, we've had the privilege to work with Denver Urban Gardens, a variety of gardens throughout metro Denver, and it's, it's been really, really successful and can be really great for creating community. This also includes a zeric, um, interpretive garden. Um, as you recall, I mean, a big consideration for Prosper is water wise. Being water wise, water conservation, using, um, drought tolerant plants, using, um, a pallet that's appropriate through the High Plains Prairie. So we have a zeric guarding and demonstration garden to really illustrate to residents and others how you can plant, how you can maintain your plants, irrigate your plants, et cetera. And then Prosper, as I've talked about, we have a, we have a farming entity called Farming America. And we, we farm, um, several thousand acres in, in eastern Colorado. And we're doing some things that are pretty interesting with farming and trying to really do technologically some advances on dryland farming. And so we want to bring that also into this park to demonstrate some of the things that we're doing from an education perspective. But this park is a little bit more passive. It's more native grasses. It's more education, those kind of considerations. But, um, the, um, with regards to our first phase, um, with our, let me just back up here really quick. Um, we do have our trail system. That includes several loops, several links that connect to all the neighborhoods. They also connect to all the pocket parks, the trail system does. And we have over six and a half miles of trails just in our first phase. Um, and then we have five point seven miles of detached pedestrian walks as well. That'd be along connector roads and along Sixth Avenue. Um, so the trail system is extremely important. Um, we've been honored to do master plan communities throughout the west and by far number one amenity always is trails, trails, trails. And so creating a meaningful trail system with a lot of loops, a lot of variety is always an important consideration and the owner of Prosper is very committed to a meaningful trail system. And then, um, I talked about another cornerstone, which the Prosper architecture and inspired design. Again, similar to the, some of the amenities I showed, I, I illustrated earlier. You know, we, we're going to, um, incorporate a, an architectural character that we call the Prosper style. You know, sometimes you hear of arts and crafts or you hear of, you know, prairie style or whatever. Well, Prosper's going to kind of have its own style. And our style is based on agrarian farms and the traditional farms. Um, they, some of them may have a contemporary accent to them. Um, indoor, outdoor living, um, is going to be strongly encouraged. Per our, our standards, we are going to require Energy Star, um, energy, Energy Star compliance with the homes and the builders. So that's important. But again, honoring the region, honoring the culture, trying to be true and create architecture that's timeless is really an important cornerstone for us. Prosper, Prosper will, as I said, the, the plan, um, will be developed in the phases. And as, as Mr. Skinner said, the preliminary plat that's before you tonight is really the first phase. It's the four hundred and forty-two home sites. And that, and what, what this, what this shows is it's phase one A, phase one B, phase one C, phase one D. So this would be the original home, the first plat, if you will. So that includes the road coming off of Watkins Road. This is Watkins Road, coming off Watkins Road, the community center, and then the single-family home sites that are here. The second, um, what we call phase one B would be adding another neighborhood to this. Now you'll notice with phase one A, there's an existing Sixth Avenue. Now, you'll notice with Phase 1A, there's an existing Sixth Avenue that's located here. We have multiple access points that access on the existing Watkins Road and including the connector road up here. The second point of access would be on Sixth Avenue. Then we add this phase, this, this portion here in Phase 1B, which is another 94 units. Phase 1C, we add to the south of, of existing Sixth Avenue, which would be another 216 units. And then finally, Phase 1D, which is another 209 units, is located here in the center, which then would realign Watkins Road as contemplated in the preliminary development plan and our master transportation plan that was approved. And in the approximate build out, it's always the crystal ball, but you know, we're, we're looking at around a 10-year horizon. Okay? So, as Mr. Skinner said, our first preliminary plat includes what I illustrated to you, the 441, 42 lots, this being existing Watkins Road, connector road A, there's the community center, the home sites, single-family detached home sites, and then existing Sixth Avenue. So that's our, that's our preliminary plat that's before you tonight. And then of course, as we go to the Phase 1B, 1C, 1D, we'd come back before you on those preliminary plats and, and obviously the final plats as well. So that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So on your larger, your half acre to one acre lots, you, because you talk about water conservation and so on, I think I saw mention of maybe, you know, limiting somehow landscaping to be compliant. Exactly how are you going to do that on those larger properties?
Yeah, what we're doing is we, we have a set of design standards and guidelines that we will have that'll allow a certain amount of irrigated area. For example, on our 5,000 square foot home sites, 20% can be, approximately 20% can be irrigated. And, and as the lots get bigger, it might be 30% or 40%, but we're doing that through design standards and guidelines and CCNRs.
Thank you.
Again, it's, water's a big deal for us. So that ethic is really important, that we restrict that.
What's your question?
So the phasing that you showed, I couldn't find that, is that on the?
It's in the.
1A, B?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the final development plan.
Oh, it's in that big?
Yeah.
That I didn't bring.
Yeah.
So your water supply, I guess we could get into that, maybe you ought to update us on your negotiations with your renewable water pipeline.
Yeah.
Fire, how are you doing?
Yeah, our water supply is per the, still the plan that we presented to the planning commission before, in terms of this initial, this initial phase will be done with our deep Denver basin groundwater wells.
The whole, the whole thing that we're looking at?
Yeah, the 970.
970.
Yeah, 970. Can be, because remember, 27% of requirement will be groundwater, well, this, this 970's not at the 27%, it's actually significantly less. But to answer your question, we are still, we had a meeting with Aqua, and the Aqua Board provided some input and direction in terms of what they wanted to see. And so right now, we're in the process, as I think I've told you, we, last time, is that we felt between Aqua and us and the engineers is physically viable, but one of the things that we're working on right now is just kind of the, the terms. So that's where we're at right now.
So do you see a problem with the terms in getting water?
Not right now.
It's just the details.
Yeah.
So you're saying no pipeline, none of that water until after this Phase 1?
Correct, or hopefully during. We don't want to wait.
You don't want to wait?
No.
So what would?
I mean, yeah, I mean, the best reason why we're at the table now, having these discussions, I mean, this is a 10-year, you know, horizon on this Phase 1, so that's why we're talking and pushing this along now, as opposed to waiting until we're to get to Phase 1D and say, oh, we better go figure this out.
So what happens if you come to an agreement with them in the next two years and?
They say, okay, let's go. We'd like to blend, we'd like to bring in renewable water sooner than later.
Would you?
Absolutely.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So you also mentioned that you would hold your builders to an E-Star standard, can you give me some more detail on that? Are you talking like a five plus star, a HERS rating of, you know, because you've got a really nice prototype here, so, you know, with world class amount of water savings. So I'm wondering what you're going to do in terms of sustainability and the building materials and, you know, energy performance?
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're looking at energy 3.0 and that criteria in terms of, you know, obviously appliances that comply with that, HVAC mechanical systems that have a central core that makes sense in terms of ventilation, thermostats, we are encouraging renewables, even though that's not in the 3.0, but we are encouraging that. So those kinds of considerations with regards to the water, you know, the low-flow fixtures, which is already actually something in our, actually 1041, that's in that, it's beyond what we're going to make them do in the standards and guidelines.
Okay, are you going to obligate them through your contracts with the builders?
Yeah.
I have a question. I know you say it's all going to be walkable, how wide will the sidewalks be and how many places will have less than five feet width?
Yeah, on the, go back to this one real quick. So the walks along the connector, the connector street will be detached, eight-foot sidewalks, and along Sixth Avenue, wells, eight-foot detached sidewalks. The local streets will have attached sidewalks that are approximately five feet. And then the trail that's on the edge, the perimeter of the soft, we have a soft surface trail, just because our experience has been that homeowners really want more soft surface and pressure finds than hardscape, and those will be between eight and 10 feet wide. So the six and a half miles I talked about is eight to 10 feet wide. And then there's another five miles approximately that are detached eight-foot blocks.
Okay, now your streets, are you intending to give those to the county or would they be private streets?
No, they'd be dedicated.
They would be dedicated. Okay, and did I see a reference to tandem garages?
No.
Okay. I wrote it down, don't know where I found it.
Okay, I mean, no.
Thank you. Any other questions?
What about the 1601? How come we're not doing something up there on the interchange and everything, getting ready to come down?
We, we have had three meetings with CDOT, talking about the 1601. And in fact, Arapahoe County will actually sponsor that, the engineering department. There has been some meetings in the past. As we, as a part of the, as the FDP and the process goes forward, we will be advancing that further. But we've started the discussion with CDOT on that. In fact, we can't really do too much further, we can't go past Phase 1 here unless the 1601 actually is figured out.
That's 10 years.
Yeah. But we can't wait 10 years, so, so that's, that's a very extensive process.
Oh, yeah. What's, uh, I think it's a check, that's a little, the whole of this. You answer your side of the case.
Yeah.
Okay, we can just, okay, we'll have you back after the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, we will open the public hearing, we have 11 people that have signed in, although not necessarily wanting to speak. We have Becky Roberts that indicated she wanted to speak.
Madam, madam chair, before we open the public hearing, I'd just like to clarify if this will be a joint public hearing for both the preliminary plat and for the final development plan, that would be appropriate, so that everyone know that they can comment on either or both.
Okay. Becky.
Good evening, my name is Becky Roberts, I live at 714 in Bowden Mile Road in Watkins. I have been a proponent of Prosper Farms since the open house they held for us on April 16th, 2014. Since the PDP was filed with the county on June 5th, 2012, until this year, June 22nd, documents and public presentations from Prosper Farms included this description of the perimeter buffer. Quote, "Large contiguous areas of open space have been located around the perimeter of Prosper, providing a buffer to adjacent agricultural and rural residential areas. A large contiguous open space area that is located along the perimeter of the community will continue to be utilized for agriculture, preservation, and recreation. October 14th, 2016, was the first time I knew of oil and gas drilling in Section 6 of Prosper Farms. A county sign for administrative oil and gas use by special review public notice was posted a few hundred feet from my home. That application has since been withdrawn. On June 22nd of this year, Prosper Farms described the open space adjacent to Watkins Farm as, quote, "A large contiguous open space area that is located along the perimeter of the community that will continue to be utilized for agriculture, preservation, recreation, and portions may be utilized for oil and gas exploration." That was this June. Tonight, Mr. Vogel, for the first time, has publicly identified the buffer as potential oil and gas drilling sites, although there were 10 sites that had been on a 2014 map of surface use agreement with ConocoPhillips. So it's three years ago. Three major oil and gas accidents have happened in Colorado this year. They warrant finding an alternate location for proposed oil and gas drilling so close to Watkins. Number one, Hudson, Colorado, on January 20th, 28,000 gallons of oil and toxic wastewater were sprayed across a 2 million square foot area and local roads were closed for two days. Number two, Firestone, on April 17th, an explosion killed two, injured two. Governor Hickenlooper said, quote, "Public safety is paramount." Mead, Colorado, on May 25th, one killed, three injured when working on a tank battery that exploded. Hickenlooper said, quote, "Our number one priority is public safety." Matt Lepore, COGCC director, said about a similar proposed drilling site near two Windsor subdivisions, quote, "Rather than shoehorning it in, have you looked for alternatives?" Lepore brought the two sides together to negotiate an alternate site. I again want to be a proponent for Prosper Farms. I love the drawings, I love the design. I ask that any proposed oil and gas drilling be located in a section of Prosper property that will not threaten current residents in Watkins. I ask that Prosper Farms share any documents with Watkins residents going forward. The map in 2014 of 10 proposed oil and gas drilling sites on Prosper Farms was not shared with any of us. By the way, today's agenda included 1,038 pages of documents. Did anyone here read all those pages? I didn't, but I tried to find a map of the proposed oil and gas sites, I couldn't. Is there one? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish? Forward, please. Name and address.
My name is Michael Fonstock, I live at 836 in Bowden Mile Road. Can you please go back to your plot plan, please, if it be possible? Please? Very good. When this all came out, I was, I was happy about it. I'm into growth, growth is good. The plans looked solid, well thought out, I kind of thought it was kind of Disneylandish for Watkins, personally, because big cities can't even pull off things like this, and we're going to have this tremendous place in Watkins with walking paths, I love, bike paths, I love. Have you ever tried to grow a fruit tree out in Watkins? They got some pie in the sky dreams about their parks that are unrealistic for maintenance and taken care of. I don't know where the money's coming from. Another thing, when I came, when this all came out, Mrs. Roberts already echoed it, none of these sites were on the maps, but they had already been in contact with ConocoPhillips. I understand they have to give them rights, I understand that. They could have been over here on the main arteries, close to the highway, where all the oil and gas ducts aren't coming through Prosper Farms and maintaining everything. On top of that, you have to have proper egress. Watkins Farms is trapped, if there is an emergency, we don't get out, all the people down here do not get out. These original things were not on the agenda. I'm very much aware of proper egress and what the liability is, if I'm trapped and my family's trapped, that's wrong. It's a shell game. We weren't told about it. That's what upsets me most. Just be honest, I'm into oil and gas, I'll move, but don't pour, put me in a corner like it's been done now. I would like to know when they want to start breaking ground. I would like to know if they've been in contact with ConocoPhillips and if they plan on permitting soon. I want to know exactly what's on the table, because nobody's telling us anymore. Now they're finally putting it in print. Yeah, I'm kind of upset, I don't like shell games, tell me the truth, if I don't like it, I'll move. And I'm going to say it again, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. And that's what I'm looking at here. God bless them if they can pull it off. But this is the Disneyland of Watkins, something's not right. Something is not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else that didn't sign up that would like to speak?
Hello? My name is Margaret Fonstock, 836 in Bowden Mile Road. I'll show you where we live.
Could you please take the microphone so that we can catch you on the video? Thank you.
I'll show you where we live. We live in this quadrant right here. If this is an oil and gas site, where is the egress road? There is no safety for us, yet Mr. Vogel, you speak so concerningly about roads, eliminating cul-de-sacs, education. There is no consideration for Watkins Farm or the neighborhood to the south. Everyone is in agreeance about this. Existing residents are concerned. You have the largest industrial sized, industrial sized oil and gas center right there in Arapahoe County. There's no egress. So if there is a blow up, if there's a concern, we don't have any way to exit, we'd have to go past the site that's blown up. All of the people in the south have to exit past these oil and gas sites in order to leave. There's no planning for an egress site, and we all vote that you don't pass this permit until there is an answer to this compelling question.
Eight wells, 32 tanks, on the, on the one in front of our house, the largest site in Arapahoe County, right next to Prosper Farms and Arapahoe.
And tell me, is this going to be the way that the oil trucks come and go right here? This is a narrow road, we don't have room, I almost got run over by an oil truck. They take up more space on the lane right now, I have to pull to the extreme right. It's not safe putting such a large industrial site next to existing homes. We have no way out. So out of concern for the common good and your jobs, I would suggest that you think carefully about passing this permit with, they should be answering to the egress site that's not there. Thank you.
I got a question. Maybe you can help me, I, I can't visualize, so you're living in the pink area.
Mr. Vogel, could you bring up more of math?
How do you get in and out of where you live now?
Okay, could you bring up another map? Could you bring up another map that shows our neighborhood? So, I don't have a pointer.
Where you live?
In this neighborhood right here.
Okay.
This is the oil and gas.
By the way, if you hadn't caught the last name.
So, we live in this community right here. We are concerned because this oil and gas site was never told to us until recently that the size that it's going to be and the fact that it's so close to our community, our existing community. So, we have no egress here in our neighborhood. We have to access Sixth to get out.
So Sixth now is just a two-lane?
It's a straight line right here. It's a two-lane. It's a two-lane.
That gets you up to I-70?
So, we access Sixth to go down Watkins Road and out to I-70.
Thank you.
So, we live here, a neighborhood to the south. Correct me, Olive is down here. Is that right?
Yeah.
So, for them to leave the neighborhood, they'd have to go past these oil and gas sites and go down Sixth. We would have to leave to go down Sixth. So that means we are commuting past a site that is a potential hazard for all of us.
So you can't go east on Sixth?
No, sir, we cannot. We are landlocked.
Okay.
So, this is a dead-end road, right here. We have no access to any other roads, so everyone is one road in, one road out. Everyone in this neighborhood has to access, what do you call this, in Boden Road, down to Sixth. It's paramount that you are concerned about this because all the renderings look pretty. I really am not concerned about what can be pulled off here as far as the education, the nice wide sidewalks, the pretty fruit trees. There is a danger here that nobody seems to be asking about. We were told that this was going to be just open space in the beginning. Two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen, at the airport, open space. And we thought, great, cornfield's pretty.
Okay.
This was just recent, this was just, it is the largest oil and gas site in Arapahoe County. We don't have an egress site. Please don't pass this permit until this has been addressed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before we go on with the public comment, I just wanted to note that this is being recorded and it's also being transmitted over live video, and if people are talking from the audience, we don't capture that on our recording. So if individuals would like to speak, it's important to come up to the podium and do that and not answer from the audience, because we don't necessarily capture all that on our recordings, and it makes it difficult for us to have an accurate record of the hearing. So, just would ask for that assistance. Thanks.
Does anybody else want to speak? Do you come forward? You say your name and address, please?
My name's Nikki Hadley. I live at three-five-two-nine-six East Penn Thrive in Watkins Farm, and I would like to suggest that all the commissioners come out and look at the properties that we're talking about and see what the configuration is. The original map that I saw from Vogel two or three years ago showed a lot more houses in that initial plat to the east. So, the big brown area on that one, there were more houses out there. So, I would suggest that you come out and look at our place and see what we're talking about. I also wonder if any money changed hands between Conoco and Furniture Row.
There's no other comments from the public? Please come forward.
I would like to say something. My name is Rose Houston.
Please speak up into the microphone.
Okay. Rose Houston. And we not only have that road, Watkins Farms there, but we also have three other streets down there. There are thirty-eight homes on Bonnie Lane, which is the road right next to the creek. Thirty-eight homes. And there's going to be a lot of traffic. There is every day, and the only unitary we have is on Sixth Avenue. And there needs to be something done so that we also have access to get out. I'm also the president of the Historical Society, and I object very strongly to this coyote run or whatever they're calling it. It's Coal Creek. Why somebody changed it, I don't know. But I do know that it was changed some time ago, and I was not involved, so. And I would like to see some of our historical things kept out there. There is some trees right at Sixth Avenue and Watkins Road that have always been known as the Watkins Trees, and they are old. They are probably a hundred years old, and I would like to know what's going to happen to them, because we also have First Creek coming down through where the trees are, and I don't want to see them destroyed. But I don't know if I have any legal action to do. It's just something in our Historical Society, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, we will close the public hearing and have Mr. Vogel have a response.
Yes, I'd like, yeah, Jeff Vogel, Vogel and Associates. Yeah, I would like to speak to some of this. I mean, while this is not necessarily, we are not the applicant for the oil and gas. As one of the residents said, you know, they do have rights. They do have mineral rights. Our preliminary development plan that's approved with Arapahoe County allows oil and gas drilling throughout, in Prosper and in this area. We, as Prosper, can't deny them their rights. We do have an executed surface use agreement that is recorded, that we have to honor. We can't, if I was to stand up here tonight and say, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're going to just tell Conoco no, or something, we're going to be in violation of our surface use agreement, so we need to honor that. Now, there are things in our surface use agreement, and a lot of which, you know, that's a recorded document that is accessible. There's things that we have done to protect us and others, including low-profile tanks, doing landforms. In fact, ConocoPhillips just drilled, or as they say, spud a well over here on Section Two of our land, in which we constructed, made them construct very large and significant landforms around it. But the low-profile tanks, no permanent lighting, doing an opaque fence around, a permanent opaque fence around the equipment, are things that we have done in our surface use agreement. You know, one of the things that has come up, and I want to make sure I, one of the things that's come up has been access, and then have we talked to ConocoPhillips? We have not received any information regarding, they had an application, as brought up earlier, that was pulled. We have not received any intent of a new application yet. We have not received a design. We don't know what they're going to do with wells right now. We, when they had the other application that was going, that was being processed, the second point of access wasn't issued. It came up then, too. And one of the things that we did speak with ConocoPhillips about then, and we're still willing to do, is about trying to address the second point of access. Because we do own land here, obviously. We don't control everything. We don't control this piece up here, but we do control this. And so, once we learn more about what they're going to do and when they're going to do and how many they're going to do, you know, our door is still open to have that discussion on providing, addressing the second point of access. So, I mean, we care about life safety. And so, that's what I'd probably say about that, but we're not in a position, I don't want to sit down here tonight and get into a big debate about what we're going to do or not do with ConocoPhillips when they're the ones who have the mineral rights, and we have a surface use agreement that we need to honor.
When did you?
When?
Trying to understand the timeline on this?
Uh-huh, it's a good question.
So, people said there was nothing on this, three years ago, four years ago, about the drilling. When Prosper was approved by the planning commissioner, I wasn't on it, but was there oil and gas drilling mentioned then?
It was in the PDP as a right, yeah.
In the PDP as a right?
Yeah.
So, when did you negotiate with ConocoPhillips?
When we first started negotiating with Anadarko.
Then when did you start with him?
That was probably 2012, 2013. And they were drilling over to the, they were going to drill over here. And so, they had sites here, and so they were working with us on two sites here and another site down here, and we probably spent two years working with them, and then they decided to lease their mineral rights to ConocoPhillips. So it all started over again, and that got abandoned. And then, in 2016, fifteen and sixteen, they, I mean, ConocoPhillips approached us about Section Eleven and Section Fourteen, which they did drill, those sites. And as I said, this past May, they spudded a well in Section Two.
Okay, what, do you think it's kind of, I mean, given the way people are feeling right now, given the accident in April, which was very well-publicized, you know, does it make you feel a little uncomfortable putting in a development with all these oil wells around?
Yeah, we, yeah, and that's why I think, well, like I said, you know, if it was up to us, can we say to ConocoPhillips, you know, we don't, we won't want you to drill in our community? I don't think we can legally do that. We can't tell them they can't access their mineral rights.
Just a second, is that true? Okay, that's true?
I've got a question to that, too.
But you've got a way, since you are building these houses, you've got a way to buffer for the community, the effect of that, right?
Yeah, incorrect. And so, this plan here, which I think came up, this is our, this is our existing preliminary development plan that's approved, right?
Yeah.
And you can see that that beige area is a planning area, that's a development area. Okay, so what we did because of Watkins Farm, and when Conoco approached us, we encroached into our area, not just the green space. Everybody, there's those comments about it's all in the green space, but you can see that most of it, if not all of it, is in our development area. It's not in the green space. So the answer to your question, yes, we pushed it further west to provide a buffer for Watkins Farm as well.
Right, well, can you figure out a way with this development that you can get egress and take care of that, since we're looking at an FDP right now? Maybe that should be a part of it.
We could address that, but I don't, you know, with, I guess, I'm not sure how that works, since this is an FDP application on not oil and gas.
Well, I mean, could we give extra time to allow you to figure out this issue? Can it, you know, well, that's continued to date certain? Would that help?
Well, we don't control the oil and gas.
No, I'm not saying you.
What they're going to do, no, I mean, I don't know, to hold up our, I guess to hold up our final development plan, to hold up our final development plan pending on what Conoco designs, I think is going to be problematic.
I'd like to interject. Bill Skinner for the Planning Division. I see the oil and gas applications, as well as the Prosper's and the commercial developments and so forth. From the staff experience, the oil and gas applications will come in. Some of them are pursued aggressively from, you know, the very first time we see them in a given location. At the same time, we'll have other applications running in other areas that look equally viable, equally aggressive, but some of those will just disappear. They'll put one in and decide, maybe based on new geology, we don't know, that, you know what, now we don't want to pursue this application, but we want to put a new one further down the road. The staff and the development community and the residents are already out there. It's hard to keep up with what the oil companies have decided is their best course of action. And I empathize with, it looks like it's always in flux until they actually come out and start to drill, because then they've got money in the hole. But what Mr. Vogel's talking about, how he can't really design to a potential oil and gas pad, they may not be fully aware themselves of where they want to go, much less able to convey to Prosper where they want to go.
Right, but I do see a road that's running right by there that people use. Right now, it's a straight shot.
Sixth.
Yes.
Yep.
But you're going to design it so it's going to curve around this piece of property.
Correct. You're talking about Sixth Avenue?
So...
Yeah, right now, it's straight like this.
Right.
And then in the future, it's going to curve, and then they're going to access, they were, I believe they still are, with access off of Sixth Avenue, existing and proposed Sixth Avenue.
Your open area there, where you're doing agricultural work now, is that correct? Isn't that a big part of your proposed open space? And now, if it's going to be potentially drilled in more than one place, how will that affect the use of that open area?
Well, here, we have a thousand-foot buffer between here and here, so we can still farm this.
So there's a thousand feet between?
This black line, this east operations drill site.
And a house in Watkins Farm, it's a thousand feet?
Yes.
But potentially, there could be at least three drilling sites? Possibly?
Yeah, possibly, I don't know.
Possibly.
I don't know. Or more.
I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed, so we can't have any more comments. I understand your frustration.
So, if I understand you correctly, Prosper is the landowner. When did you sign a surface lease with Conoco for that area?
In 2014.
And I'm trying to understand, you should have full control of yes or no. It's your land, surface land, not the mineral rights, that's something else, that's under the ground, but the surface.
Yet, yes.
You have total control whether you allow or you don't allow them to build their drilling site.
That's, yeah, but they have, they have specific criteria on laterals of where they, how they drill the field?
I understand all that.
Yeah.
I've been with you all this for twenty years. What I'm saying is, is still, you did previously, not now, because you've signed a lease, you controlled exactly where they were going to put their drilling operation.
Right.
You could have said, no, we want it down farther. They can lateral drill up. They wanted to, they'd go two miles. But, so I think it's disturbing, because if we approve the FDP, with that, that goes in effect.
I think.
You've got a, you've got a contract. You can't, you can't move them now.
Right.
But you hurried up and did it in 214.
Right.
That's three years ago.
But we can, you know, as I said earlier, there are, you know, there are things, you know, one of the things that we heard about, I mean, heard loud and clear tonight, we heard about when they had their application before, was the second point of access. And that's something that I think, you know, that's something we can help address. Like I said, there's some of these out parcels, it depends on where they go. If they want the second point of access to go to this out parcel to what's known as Coal Fact right now, I'm sorry, is it, yeah. You know, we would have to work with this landowner, but we own this piece of land, and could we grant? and could we grant an easement for that to happen? Sure, we'd be, we'd be open to doing that. We talked, again, before they pulled their application, they came and talked to us about it, and said that we would be doing that, and I'm willing to, you know, I'm willing to say that we would work on that here tonight, that would, I just don't wanna be responsible that if they do something that we feel just cannot happen, or they change-
Control the deal's cut.
Yeah, so, but I guess, I, I wanna be clear with the planning commission, that, you know, the life safety, the second point of access, if there's something Prosper can do with our land holdings to help alleviate that, we are happy to investigate that with Conoco Phillips.
So, I guess my next question would be, would you agree to construct a second access road if the landowner would give you access to, to Colfax purely? Would you do that?
Yeah.
Second access, because that keep, like they said, that keep all the oil trucks, all the service trucks, everybody off your development, I mean, the people gotta be tipped with these.
We, we would, we would agree to an easement on that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, I wanna address the bill, the county. So, you know, when I was reading through, you know, the cases, I didn't see, I saw this in the supporting documents about Conoco, did the county have any concerns about its proximity to both this development and the existing, when they were looking at the fact it's kinda bordered by both?
You're talking about the location of the pad site?
Yes.
Concerned about that? We're concerned about every pad site, it seems like every pad site that goes out there, distances vary, but someone isn't fond of it. Certainly, when they came, when, when Conoco comes in and starts to, or any, shouldn't just pick on Conoco, when any potential drill site comes in, the staff, primarily Diancosis, but the staff does look at the site and alert that company, like, you know, you have residences here, and here, and here, and here, and here. And we can suggest, we can occasionally convince them to nudge one way or the other, but once they have secured mineral rights, they do have quite a lot of control over how they express themselves on the surface. And unfortunately, the larger bodies that have regulatory control over that haven't chosen to put in place large buffer requirements, and we're hemmed in by COGCC regulations as much as anyone else. The county is one of the smaller players at the table when it comes to that actual authority on what we can do.
So what is actually your authority in this situation with that site? Do you have any authority, or?
The county permits well sites either through a use, use by special review process, or an administrative use by special review process. If an oil and gas company has a MOU, memorandum of understanding with the county, usually will allow a administrative process where it's just processed administratively. Diancosis is the oil and gas specialist who works for the county, she'll look at it, she'll come up with, you know, what kind of impacts does the site have potentially for surrounding properties, neighbors, and she'll start negotiating with the oil and gas developer to put in mitigating measures, buffers. I mean, there's been situations where we've gotten the oil and gas company, at least one that I can think of, where they got the oil and gas company to temporarily relocate a resident who had breathing issues during the more impactful development of the well that would affect his, his breathing ability. So there are things we can do, but, you know, by and large, there's a lot of preemption issues, and once the oil and gas company has the right to have, they own the minerals, they have the right to recover those minerals too. And there's not a whole lot that the county can really do to stop that. We can try and mitigate it as best as possible, but I, we can't just say, no, you can't do it. And then, for instance, relative to this FDP, should you deny this? That doesn't mean that Conoco Phillips can't come in and drill, and do the same 32 tank, you know, eight well site that they're planning, so.
So you're, you're saying we could not make a condition about mitigation with any drilling?
I, I think it's unlikely, I, I think it gets into an exact, Shannon, it goes beyond some of the authority we have in our code, I, I think the alternate access is a very good thing, and maybe that's something that-
I think that's actually what I really do.
Yeah.
That's, that's a good escape route.
Right in there.
Yeah, I mean, exact, like I said, we're-
That's a good access route for the oil company.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and I, and like I said, we, we started talking to them about this before they pulled it, and we're happy to, to continue to, to be that, I just wanna be clear that I don't know their design, and where that access connects to the, or where it connects with Watkins Farm is something that we need to discover, but tonight, you know, I'll tell you that, yeah, Prosper will work and use our land holdings to try to figure out a, you know, a second pointer, an emergency vehicle access. I don't think we have an issue with that.
That would be good.
We can't take any more comments, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Hi, Jason Reynolds with planning. One thing I, you know, to sort of continue on the theme that our attorney was talking about, was the interaction between zoning and oil and gas development. The action of approving the final development plan really doesn't have a connection with oil and gas development. The sites shown on this plan are really for information purposes, it's the landowner showing, hey, this is where we've planned these out, but from a zoning perspective, the oil and gas sites could be placed anywhere on the exhibit that you see before you, regardless of the zoning. It's what Mr. Hill is talking about with sort of the preemption. The state has said, and case law has said, that local zoning doesn't really matter when it comes to oil and gas development, so really, those are for information only, it's not as if the planning commission were saying, these are the sites for oil and gas, if they were to recommend approval of this final development plan.
Sorry, I missed another question. So it sounds like the, the lady that's in charge of Arapahoe County oil and gas situations permits or whatever, she makes the decision? Yes, sir?
Well, she doesn't really make the decision. If, if it's a full USR, and it goes to the Board of Commissioners, as for that, the Board of Commissioners makes the decision. If it's an administrative USR, that's actually approved by Dave Schmidt, the Public Works Development Director, so.
With authority granted by the board?
Yeah, with, with that authority granted by the board, pursuant to the administrative process.
Whoever, whoever researched, didn't, didn't look too close.
I'm not sure.
Well, with Watkins Farm, one, one exit in and out. Looks like the county person, whoever did the research, didn't really do a good job researching based on what that's-
Well, understand that the county doesn't have control over where-
Yeah.
-that well site gets placed.
Yes, but, but the county has in the past negotiated very well with Conoco on roads in, out, destruction of the roads, gonna fix the roads, how many trucks, I mean, it, it sounds like that we could've, or we, the county could have negotiated that act, access-
Well, we're in the process.
With Conoco, not you, with, with Conoco. They've done it with Conoco and other items, it's been really, very well, done very well.
Well, access was certainly an issue we discussed with Conoco, and weren't prepared to approve the administrative oil and gas used by special review due to access concerns. They were also unable to secure a will-serv letter from the fire district at that location at that time, and, after having a few meetings with them, Conoco opted to withdraw their application.
Okay.
Then to follow on that, so, meaning when they apply for a site, or to build on a site, they can be held to a condition such as you need to provide a secondary access if you wanna use this site?
It's an analysis of sort of the life safety factors, and, you know, part of the concern that the fire district and Arapahoe County had was that in addition to the Watkins Farm residents, you have, you know, scores of other residents who access Imboden Road and other roads to the south, with their only egress being at the Sixth Avenue and Imboden intersection. So if there were something to happen at that site blocking off Sixth Avenue, it's not just Watkins Farm who would've been prevented from exiting the area. So that was a huge concern for county staff, as well as for the fire district, and that's why Conoco was not able to get a will-serv letter from the fire district before withdrawing their application.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, any other questions for Mr. Vogel? Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and/or any comments, suggestions. I'm good, I'm glad we got that detailed explanation there. Well, I guess I'd like the county, that the, part of the record that the county needs to pay a lot of attention to any application, that this egress issue is a big one.
Well, I think it's good that Mr. Vogel has stepped up and-
Absolutely.
-agreed to work with Conoco, whatever, get that access road in, if he can get the easement through to Colfax. That, that's excellent, that's you. He's done everything he can.
Prosper will not happen overnight, so there's time to get that road in place-
But-
For Watkins Farm.
How soon will Conoco be back driving it? I mean, that's, that's, that's the timing, is what Conoco's gonna do, not what you guys are gonna do. Nobody knows.
I mean, I mean, yeah, that's correct, and so, like I said, when they come forward, I mean, like I said, we, that section that you just talked about, Mr. Rader, let me just point to it, just so it's clear, you know, from here to, from here to here, we control this area, can we provide an easement? Yeah, we'd be, we'd do it.
That would, that would be great.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other final comments, discussion, anybody interested in bringing it to more?
We need to, how about those historic trees?
Oh, yeah.
What's been happening with those?
The historic trees, they're in the, yeah, they're in the, they're in the coyote, which, let me, let me answer that question too. We didn't name it Coyote Run. Somebody else did, and by the way, we also have a Rat Run drainage here, which we did not name that at all either. We wish we could change that, I don't like Rat Run. The Coyote Run we did, and those trees are in the Coyote Run drainage, right here, which will stay in the drainage, so we're not planning on impacting that, cause they're in the floodplain, we're not grading in that, so, we're not, we're not gonna impact those. And then finally, one other question that came up was about maintenance on the parks. I mean, Prosper has a metropolitan district, we have a Parks and Recreation District, as you may recall, that was approved with Arapahoe County, that, that's gonna be a vehicle for maintaining, building our, our parks, okay?
All right, thank you. Is anybody interested in any more discussion, or interested in making a motion?
Again, just for clarification, we need two motions, one for the preliminary plat, and one for the final development plan.
I'll pick one.
I would like to make a motion. Do you like to hear the plat, or the?
I'll do the plat.
Very good.
Yes. In the case of P-16 dash zero twenty-one, Prosper number one preliminary plat, I have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation, and the public comments as presented at the hearing, and hereby move to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the following condition, and hereby move to recommend approval of this application subject to the following condition. One, prior to signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant must address comments and concerns to the satisfaction of the public works staff as identified during the review of the P-16 dash zero twenty-one application.
Second.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously for the preliminary plat. And now we need a motion regarding the final development plan?
I'll make a motion. Okay. In the case of P-16 dash zero twenty-two, Prosper number one FDP, I have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation, and any public comment as presented at the hearing, and hereby move to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the following conditions, and hereby move to recommend approval of this application subject to the following conditions. Number one, prior to signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant must address comments and concerns to the satisfaction of the public works staff as identified during the review of the P-16 dash zero twenty-two application.
Second. Motion has been seconded. You take a roll on this one?
Yes.
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 So the motion carries unanimously, and any other comments from the county?
Yes, again, I would like to note that this is a recommendation that goes on to the Board of County Commissioners, so for people who are interested and would like to make additional comment, there will be a public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners, which will be noticed, and the property will again be posted.
And we have a meeting next week, is that correct?
Yes, the planning commission does have your regular meeting on July 18th.
Okay, we're good.
You said you understood the plat, Mark didn't have quite the right explanation on the gray water versus perp ethyl.